Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the November 16th Board of Alderman Meeting. Thank you Attorney Blumberg for hitting record, by the way. Up first, we have minutes of the previous meeting, November 2nd, 2020, I believe Clerk Heck emailed these out a couple hours ago to all of you.
I'm over for the approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and seconded. Is there any corrections, alterations to the minutes of the previous meeting? I am hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of approving the previous meeting's minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Real quick, just because we do have a lot of callers with us tonight, as always, if you're not speaking, please do mute your phone. If I get background noise, I'll have to mute your line for you, just so we can hear what we're doing. And I thank you in advance for that. So, up next, we are outside. I know we have Jeff Winberg with us here, who would like to address the board. Jeff, I'll hand it over to you.
Good evening. I see that you've got a lot of people on a full agenda, so I'm going to make this very quick, and actually, I've got a couple items on the agenda myself. So, I just wanted to let the board, as soon as I could, once it became official, that I have decided to retire from the position of Commissioner of Public Works, effective the end of this year, just a month and a half from now. I'll probably be able to communicate in better terms, and perhaps a little more extensively, closer to that time. My deep appreciation for the support that Mayor Loris, Mayor Laire, this board, your predecessors, and the people of Rutland have given me over 30 years, wearing various hats and serving this community in various capacities. As I said, I'll have other opportunities later time, but a couple of things I do want to just share, and that is that it has been an enormous honor to serve in various capacities, but especially as Commissioner of Public Works, and I'm looking at Paul right now on the screen, and I think if anybody understands what I'm saying, he would understand very well. The people of this city are blessed with an exceptionally good workforce, and DPW is as good as it gets. The leadership in the department, the middle management, the dedication of everybody up and down the line to providing good quality services to the people of this city is exemplary. And I just can't say enough about how I'm going to miss the job, which is, I know Mayor Laire is on the line, but it's better than your job, Mayor, I'm telling you right now. There's no comparison. This is a better job by a long shot. But it's mostly because of the people that the department has. You have an exceptionally good people. I also think perhaps they may be the most underappreciated workforce in public service in the city, but that's okay, and that's okay, because we understand that you folks who are closer to what the folks in the department do, do appreciate them. Certainly, the mayors have always appreciated them. And whenever the rubber hit the road, and things got very, very dicey out in the real world, out on the streets, the people who got the benefit of that work, of the city, were just exceedingly appreciative. So, I think people know that. But the folks at DPW, almost without exception, recognize that when people turn on the tap and don't give a second thought to the safety or the quality, or for that matter, the reliability of their water, or when they run it down the drain, they don't have to worry about polluting a stream or anything like that, whether they get up in the morning after a difficult night weather-wise, and know they're going to be able to get to work, they don't give those things a lot of thought. And the fact that they don't have to give those things thought, and there's 100 other examples, but you have little time, and we need to move on, that's a win. That's how the folks in DPW know that they've done their job. When the citizens of the city don't have to worry about those things, you give them a second thought, it means we're doing our work, and that is perhaps, in a way, the highest compliment. So, I just wanted to sing their praises at this opportunity, and express my thanks, and especially to the people of the city, who are, this is a very special place, Rutland is a very special place, and it's not because of where we are, it's because of who we are. The people of this city are not wealthy, they're not powerful, they're not politically connected in any particular way compared to perhaps some other places in Vermont, but they are, without a doubt, the most generous and compassionate people or community I've ever known, and for that matter, most of the people who come here and get to know us figure that out pretty quickly as well. So, I just want to say thank you, from the bottom of my heart.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, this is the Mayor, if I could just say a couple of words, following up Jeff's announcement.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. So, Jeff and I have known each other for over 20 years. He and I were not always on the same side of the political fence, but we've talked about that. And you know, that's just the thing, that we talked, we sat down, we talked, and we listened. We respected each other, and we respected each other's opinions. You know, when I was first elected back in 2017 as mayor, I could easily have made the change at DPW Commissioner, set up my own team from top to bottom. But I was convinced to retain the best talent, the people that I knew were of high integrity, and the folks that I knew would give me the best advice, and always, always, always do what's best for the taxpayers of the City of Rollins. I have never, ever regretted my decision. This is indeed a big loss for the city, and he will be hard to replace, and I want to publicly thank Jeff for everything he's done for the City of Rollins. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Laire. Alderman Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, this is bittersweet. You know, I think you've done an outstanding job, and you know, there's, like, even when I was there too, there was always one or two difficult hurdles that you had to overcome, and I think you've done an outstanding job with overcoming any of those hurdles, but I just wanted to wish you good luck on your retirement, and say that you will be missed.
Thank you, Alderman Clifford. Alderman Davis.
Jeff, I got to bring you back a long ways, and that was a day that you sat in my dining room with my neighbors, because we were having some difficulty in this neighborhood, and felt that we weren't finding a resolution. And at that time, you were the mayor of the city, and you graciously came down, and you listened to a number of people in this neighborhood, and you shared their concerns, and you weighed in on their concerns. But the one thing you did is you told me to run for the Board of Alderman, which I did, and I have sat here for the last 30 years, and I'm appreciative to that for you. You taught me a lot. As David Laire, Mayor Laire, said, we didn't always agree, but we always worked together. There was always a level of respect, a level of understanding. I appreciate your knowledge, I appreciate your political savvy, and I wish you the best, and I will miss you.
Wow. That certainly goes both ways, and I very much appreciate that. I remember that meeting, Sharon, very, very well, and it touches me that you mentioned it at this time. I'll be around for a month and a half, and I'm not going anywhere afterwards, I've already assured the folks in the office, and that I'll be available, questions come up, and you know, those kinds of things, do you remember, of course, that happens all the time anyway. But as questions come up, or if I need to come in and find a file, or anything like that, I'll certainly be available and happy to do that. So, I'll do everything in my power to make sure that things keep running smoothly, but in many ways, I'm the least essential person in the whole team. I'm a support function for everybody who gets the work done, and as long as they are on the job, and they're, you know, well provisioned, they have the resources they need, little pre-pitch for the budget, because I will be here through that process, they'll get the work done, and they'll do the job for the people of the city. But I'll stop there. There's much more, but we don't need to do that tonight, we'll have time, and I do thank you so much for your kind words. Thank you. Means a lot.
Thank you, Commissioner Winberg. Alderman Gillum.
I too have served a long time, and I believe I served on one of your mayor campaigns, and you talked me into running for the Board of Alderman, so I'm one of your protocches also. It's been a long road, my good man, and welcome to the world of retirement. You're going to love it. God bless.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Anybody else? Alderman DePoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner of Public Works, Commissioner of Environmental Conservation, Mayor, and you know, Town Manager for a couple of years down in Ludlow, going back about 30 years. I too am one of those who you visited to encourage a run, and that was in 1997, 1998, I guess it was, for the state legislature, Jeff. And if you remember, we had a meeting also. So, you've been very active in getting people to, into public service, you've been very active in this city and in this state, and I think that your resume, going back over your career, to me, is second to none. And you know, you have a lot of influence, and I think that over the last several years, being the Commissioner of Public Works, has really brought this city quite a ways, and saved millions of dollars when it comes to things like the Moonbrook watershed, and the sewer plant, and overseeing the replacement of the filters at the water treatment center, the roof replacement, I know you had a lot to do with that. So, I can't thank you enough for me being here, obviously, others that have spoken being here, and we're going to sadly miss you in this city going into the future. So, but I wish you...
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Alderman Garuso.
So, Jeff, I just only wondered, what's taking you so long? You've done it, you've overdone it, you've been here a long time, you and Nancy need to go enjoy your grandchildren. Jeff and I go back to when he was not employed at all.
That's right.
That's a long ago, WHWB, when his wife worked there, Nancy, and maybe a beer or two at, I think it was Ronnie's Penit Pub, or even Benji's Corner back then. And I wish you well, Jeff, and I think you know, you're long overdue, it's time, you need to go, you need to relax, you need to enjoy life, you know, life is too short, so just call my friend and, you know, don't let the door hit you, you know what I mean? Just get out of here and go have some fun, and relax, and go to where it's warm, too. But you've done a great job, and you're a fabulous, fabulous mayor, one like the city's never seen before, and I commend you for that, and I thank you for all you've done, and good luck, my friend.
I have to add one comment, Sammy just, so, in February, I'm going to be 68 years old, and that makes me almost old enough to run for president, so... But the grandchildren are not getting any younger, and neither am I, so I'm in great health, and I certainly expect and look forward to doing exactly what Sam just advised, is to enjoy some of the years ahead, and they're probably not going to be all great, I mean, I hope we never have another 2020, but in any event, we're looking forward to that. But again, you've got a full agenda, so I'll stop.
Thank you, Commissioner Winberg. Thank you for all you've done for the city. Your service to Rutland is unmatched by anyone. So, we are still outside the rail, for any members of the public who wish to address the board on items that are not on the agenda.
This is John Ruggiero. I'd like to address the board outside the rail. I'm not sure what's on the agenda, because I don't have one, but I can give you what I want to talk about, and you can let me know if that's appropriate or not.
Apparently, go ahead, John.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to say a word about Jeff. Unlike most of you, I don't sit on any boards, I don't, not a politician, but I am a consumer of what Jeff has provided to us through the Public Works on a large scale, and I have not always agreed with what Jeff has proposed, or tried to get through, but from top to bottom, when I call that office, and it's a reflection of the top, they're very efficient, they're incredibly informed about everything, they are very courteous, and I think it's a reflection of Jeff, and that has been in the past, you know, his past tenure. It runs very well there, he's created a very good office, and he said, you know, it's my team that makes it go, and that's very true in a lot of cases, but it starts at the top. So, as a consumer of his product here in the city, I think we're going to miss him a lot. He runs a very good ship there at Public Works, and he has great people there, and has an excellent team, and it's all reflective of him. So, I just wanted to say that, just, I didn't even know he was going to be on here tonight. But what I did want to talk about was zoning. I tried to call in at 6:45, and I tried to get in on the computer, and I was not successful, and apparently, the public hearing went very quickly. And I want to apologize for not having been able to get through, but that's what I want to say a few words about, if you care to hear, I know the public hearing's been closed, but I think it's important that maybe you have another view of the zoning that's being proposed before you vote on it, maybe to give it, you know, some more depth review. I don't think there's any hurry to get this thing voted on, and I don't want to prolong this, so I'll see what I have to say if I'm able to, and then we'll leave it at that.
Yes, go ahead, John.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to apologize, because I know that the proper place to have done this is at the Planning Commission, but I went back and checked my emails to Tara, and she probably rolled her eyes every time I sent her one, I know she did, but I'm a big proponent of high-density zoning in downtowns and areas close to downtown. So, I counted, I sent about 22 emails over the past year and a half, and we'd had short conversations about it, and she knows how I feel about it, and I had asked her, you know, let me know when these Planning Commission meetings are taking place, or when you start looking at the zoning, and you know, the virus gets into play, who looks at the notices, blah, 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 my own fault, I should have taken, you know, the responsibility myself. But this morning, I was filing for approval, and I noticed that the proposed new zoning was on the agenda, and I couldn't believe it. So, long story short, I, and I don't think it's Tara's responsibility, but I think she knew quite clearly my interest, and I actually felt a little let down that she didn't send me an email or a text and say, hey, John, they're looking at the zoning now, and I know you're interested, and this is when they meet, why don't you come down and, you know, give them your spiel, good or bad, they may not listen to you, they may, you know, roll their eyes, whatever, but I didn't get that. And again, it's not her fault, it's mine. The notices are public, you know, I should have, if I was that interested in it, I should have taken the initiative. But I also feel, I'm not sure what happened at the Planning Commission meetings, and even what happened at the public hearing, but I'm pretty sure that there was not a lot of input from the public with the zoning regulations. And I think that this set of zoning regulations are pretty much the same as what we've had since 1947, and they're not going in the right direction when it comes to high-density usages downtown and in the gateway parts of the zoning. We're still stuck with 10,000 square feet to build something, you know, some places an acre. We are a small, blue-collar town, and what I generally want to say is that we need higher density, because we have a diverse population, and in order to attract people, students, young people, seniors, they all, all need affordable housing, and affordable housing comes with higher densities. It's the wave across the country. I have looked at Saratoga zoning, some of the richest towns, small towns, are creating high-density zones where you have smaller units, where you have studios, where you have efficiencies, in old homes, they're privately built, they're not with nonprofit public money. And I'm afraid what our zoning has done is sort of just taken what we've done in the past since 1947, and not allowed any flexibility, not allowed for higher-density usages close to downtown, that for the future for us is going to be a problem. We will not be able to grow. A component of that is that we don't have any more land, so the way to combat that is to create higher-density areas throughout the city. And I'm not talking about rooming houses, I'm simply talking about the type of housing that Elizabeth Kulis is trying at IHM, that Kevin Lozo just did on Woodstock Avenue, they built nine units of, I think, 400, 500 square feet of housing. That's what seniors need, that's what single people who work need. We don't have that in our zoning. We have 10,000 square feet, except in one area, which is what's known as the MR1 zone, which allows, you know, building on a 65-square-foot footprint, where you could build up to, you know, four, five, six units. So, my whole point here is to really take a look at the gateway districts where, you know, you need to have 10,000 square feet, that's a quarter of an acre. If you look along Strong's Avenue, and this is for housing, there's no succinctness quarter of an acre. You know, we're basically requiring grandfathering to let people have what they already have, and if they, you know, can't do anything with it, they're stuck. From all the way from Stewart's, all the way to downtown, you got Tasty Bakery, you got little houses that people used to live in, surrounded by all retail, all commercial, all industrial, you know, the gateways are all that, restaurants, et cetera. Who wants to live with a family along Strong's Avenue in a two-family house, which is pretty much what it allows? No one. You don't want kids in those neighborhoods, because they're not neighborhoods along the gateways. The gateways should be higher-density-type housing, where, I mean, I can tell you that, you know, I'm going to be proposing, putting in some permits for it. People now want to live on the bus line. The bus line is all the gateway, you know, routes into town. They want small studios, they want to be able to afford to pay their rent. Seniors need to live downtown, they need to be closer to the bus, but this zoning has not done anything about that at all. There's no flexibility. It still has the old-style, you know, large-lot-type development, and in a lot of ways, across the country, people find that to be exclusionary. You know, back in the day, the large lots were done in a way so poor people couldn't live in those neighborhoods, and ethnic people couldn't live in those neighborhoods. That's why we have the gut that has 6,500 square feet for a house, and we have W Avenue that has, you know, a quarter, you know, 10,000 square feet, and it was pretty much done to keep people apart, but in the downtowns and the gateways, we don't have to do that. And it may be too late, but my suggestion would be that in the gateways, at least consider it, do the same as we're doing in the downtown district. Downtown district only requires 5,000 square feet to really do anything, and that's good high-density zoning. But in the gateways, we're still stuck in 10,000 square feet, and most of the properties don't have that kind of acreage, and you don't need that kind of acreage. You know, you can have studios and efficiencies and one-bedroom apartments that serve a lot of our population now. Millennials aren't buying houses, they want to live close to downtown, they want to live close to where all the stores are. Seniors need to be downtown, they can't afford a two- or three-bedroom apartment, you know, and families don't really want to be downtown, and they're better off in MR1 and MR2, and you know, some of those other neighborhoods that are a little bit further out. So, I'm sorry I missed the boat on the meetings and all, and it may be too late, but I really do believe that the zoning we have now really doesn't do much in terms of the future of the city. I think we could be more progressive in our approach to zoning, and I think we could broaden the type of people that could live in the city affordably. You know, IHM, I don't know where that project is now that Elizabeth retired, but she was doing 30, 40 small units. That's small units, that means, you know, one or two people living in them, because it's close to downtown, it's on the bus route, but she's also spending $10 million. That's not necessary, and a lot of people don't want to live in the big houses downtown or along the gateway, you know, and many single people do. I have tenants now, I put in studios in some places, they love it, they walk to Westminster Cracker, they walk to work at Price Chopper, they don't need a car, they don't want a car, it's too expensive. So, that would have been all I had to say at the public hearing, and that's what I would have tried to convince the Planning Commission to do, had I been a little more proactive about it. But, you know, for over a year, I've been sending emails to Tara saying, high-density, 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 and I read the zoning today, and it's same-o, same-o, and we're, you know, we do the same, we're going to get the same result, and if Rutland wants to grow, I think that a harder look should be taken at this high-density stuff. I think that the citizens of the community need it for affordable housing, I think it can be done well, it can be done cleanly, doesn't have to be, you know, horrible housing, and it can be done privately, which is the most important, and when it's done privately, it's done more efficiently and less expensively. And I could go toe-to-toe with Elizabeth on the number of these little units that I've created, I have a demand for them. We have seasonal workers that come into town that want to be downtown, they add to the economy. We have traveling nurses that come through, add to the economy. Many of them stay, traveling nurses stay, they love it here, they like Rutland, you know, and they're, they want to be, you know, where all the action is, and in a lot of ways, they create the action. That's the whole idea of a downtown and the gateways. You can still keep them clean, you can still light them well, you can build the sidewalks, but having that higher density will really transform, or possibly transform, what Rutland has to offer in terms of affordable, good, small-type housing. All the major cities are doing it, small, you know, small Midwestern to large urban areas are all doing it. Some cities are getting rid of zoning, Minneapolis got rid of zoning altogether. San Francisco's going through these huge problems where people have to commute three hours to get, you know, to their jobs, because there's zero affordable housing. And our zoning is built for single-family housing, and we should try to change that a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Ruggiero. I do want to just point out that the zoning public hearing this evening was largely for the amendment to the CSJ property, as well as some compliance updates.
Okay. I missed that then. Okay, I'm sorry.
The rewrite is still being worked on, just so you know, so I don't think you're filling this the boat here on this.
Okay.
But thank you for your...
Well, if I haven't, there's no vote, I will make sure I attend whatever committee meeting is looking at it, or whatever Planning Commission meeting, you know, I will attend all of them. I have volumes of information about this.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So, we are, we're still outside the rail. Do we have any other members of the public here to address the board on matters, not on the agenda? I am hearing and seeing none, but there's a lot of people on the screen, so I'm just trying to make sure. All right, then we will move on to communications from the Mayor, Mayor Laire.
Okay, so thank you. I do have several things I wanted to touch on tonight. First one, and I'll try to get through this quickly... First one, and I'll try to get through this quickly, we, the city was in a receipt of a proposal for Laz parking regarding their upcoming budget. I did receive that a couple of months ago, got lost in the shuffle with everything else that's been going on. I know this did come up at a recent finance committee meeting, so what I would like to ask is for a referral to the, of the proposed Laz parking budget to the finance committee.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded to reserve, the Laz parking garage contract to finance committee. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? I'm hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor LaR.
Thank you. So next I had, just wanted to touch on a couple of issues regarding COVID-19 and the latest governor's guidelines that came out on Friday. We, as a city, the city attorney, HR director, risk management, we met earlier today to talk about those particular guidelines and what they mean for our operations, you know, at City Hall and for all of us working for municipal government. So the group decided to, as the safety committee, meet, and they are going to meet tomorrow. And if they are in agreement with some of the ideas that we have, we're going to start implementing some changes in the next couple of days. And just to touch on a couple of, a few of the, of the points that we will be talking about, remote working and returning to what it looked like back in the spring, that's one of the touchpoints. I think the governor highlighted that, and it's been pretty clear to us that that's what he's looking for, in particular with municipal government operations. So we're going to talk about that. We're going to be talking about firming up contacts, tracing, and logging in. And in particular, we're going to be now logging in and taking names and information from every single person that comes into City Hall. That's something that, again, is coming directly from state government. He was pretty clear in that he foresees all meetings back to remote. There has been a couple of instances where we've met in smaller groups at City Hall, and it looks like the recommendation is to go back to all remote for anything that's involved the city government, as long as we're, the numbers remain high. I do know that I saw in the last couple of days that the city of Berry has actually decided to reclose City Hall, fair City Hall. I hope that we don't get to that, but that's, that's something that we have to look in the, in our crystal ball and see what that looks like if indeed the numbers continue to rise. That would be a last resort, I don't want to go there, but if we have to, we'll have to. Hopefully, the governor will make some more, have some more updates and clarifications at tomorrow's press conference, as his press conference is on Tuesday and Friday. I think that's it for COVID-related things and where we stand right now, and I will update the board by email if we do indeed make any of those changes. So the third thing I wanted to bring up tonight, and this is in the realm of good news, I did send out an email late this afternoon giving you all a heads-up, that I was planning on presenting this name to you tonight. As time has passed, it's become very clear to me and, and to all who have worked with and around City Hall and up at the, up at the fire station, that the particular, this particular person that I am presenting to you, this man has shown in his many months serving as your interim fire chief, that Billy has shown the leadership, he has shown the desire, and he shows the temperament to successfully become the permanent fire chief for the city of Rutland. So for the last few weeks, we have been negotiating with Bill over a proposed agreement and an tentative contract. I want you to all know that Bill has my full trust and my full respect. He has shown on a couple of different occasions, through lengthy periods of interim leadership, that he can get the job done. So therefore, it's my honor to submit the name of William Lovett to the Board of Aldermen tonight for your consideration as the permanent full-time chief for the city of Rutland. His resume will be forwarded to you in the morning, and I ask, as is the protocol, that you table the nomination until your next board meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded to table the nomination of Bill Lovett to permanent fire chief of the fire department. Alderman Garusa.
Just a question, I mean, we've all known, Bill, he's been around for a long time, his dad was a fire chief or assistant chief, and we often suspend the rules. I mean, is there anything wrong with suspending, is, is suspending the rules applicable at this time, or do we still have to give him the, to accept a table?
Alderman Garusa, we should table it, just so we have the customary two weeks to review and reach out with.
All right, cool, thank you. I still vote motion, I still support the motion, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, feedback, comments? I'm seeing none, so all those in favor of tabling the nomination, the recommendation of Bill Lovett for fire chief for the fire department, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, could I speak for a moment?
Yes, I didn't even see you on here, please do.
Sorry, I'm hiding in the corner. Just wanted to express my gratitude and thanks to the mayor for his vote of confidence. Also, with so many of the members of the board reaching out, it's an honor to serve you and the city. Particularly, I want to acknowledge the efforts of the department. The men and women at the department are exceptional, it's a great honor to be able to lead them into the future, and I really appreciate it. Anytime you need anything or want to reach out, please give me a call.
Thank you, sir. All right, now just to make this motion to table official, would you, please, again, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Very good.
And if I could, one more thing, after talking with the city attorney earlier before the meeting, it is, is our intent to send a copy, a longer copy of the proposed contract to the Board of Aldermen, so you have plenty of time to take a look at that.
Very good, thank you, Mayor LaR.
And that's all I got.
Very good. Any questions, feedback from the board, from Mayor LaR? I'm hearing and seeing none, so we shall move on to additions and additions to the agenda. We do have a number, and please jump in if I'm missing anything. We will be adding Alderman Clifford's report out from the general committee. I believe we need to add the zoning amendment from the, the public hearing prior to this. I believe we need to add a request from GMP, it was brought along from Commissioner Wembird. And Attorney Blumer, I believe you had reached out with an addition as well.
Yes, if you could also add a recommendation from the city-owned properties committee for the sale of two lots in the Stonegate Development. And I have good news, I'm also asking to delete the executive session at the end of the, or the one executive session that we have on the agenda.
Okay. So I'll move, I'll move those motions to add the additions and to delete the executive session.
Second.
Second.
Very good, we have a motion, it's been seconded to add those four items and delete the one executive session. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. So we are now on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Up first, Barbara Spalding, RRA, Vtrans, twenty-twenty Transportation Alternatives Grant Application, this is pages one through nine of your packet.
So Matt, I'm on the phone, this is Susan Schreidman, I'm working on that application.
Very, Susan, go ahead, I didn't even know you were on, but I'll turn it over to you.
In the, this is for segment three of Rutland Creek Pass, which goes from West Street down the west on West Street through the suburban propane parcel, crosses mid-block, down Green Mountain Powers parcel with a new pre-engineered pedestrian bridge, and lands at Meadow Street Park, goes south along the edge of the ballfield to meet up with segment four. So this is the segment that would connect segments two and four that's missing right now. And we are in the conceptual engineering stage, the pre-engineering, and with the twenty-five percent plans, the engineers developed a rough cost estimate which led us to realize that the existing two grants that we have for the pass are not going to cover the cost of the construction and the construction inspection required. So there are two general funding sources for bike-ped facilities in the state, one is the Transportation Alternatives Grant, the other being a bike-ped grant that's out in the summer. And the project manager from Vtrans recommended to me that we apply for a Transportation Alternatives Grant. The maximum on the grant application is three hundred thousand, it requires a twenty percent match, ten of which has to be in cash, and so the match for the three hundred thousand is three hundred, is seventy-five thousand. And there's about between two and three million dollars statewide for this, and this would help us, it wouldn't cover the shortfall that we have right now, but the numbers we have are also very preliminary, so I'm not, they will change as the engineering proceeds, but this seems like a timely opportunity for us to apply for additional funds to cover the construction. So what we're asking, we had a public meeting this evening prior to your board meeting, where some of the aldermen were on the phone, and we're asking the board to support the application and understand that the local, the match will be raised by private local funds, which is what we've done in the past, and we intend to raise the funds through cash and in-kind services and materials. The grant announcement will be made in the spring, which gives us time to raise that additional funds that we would need, and, but we, we would like to be in construction by next fall and hopefully allow a contractor to work in the fall into the spring of twenty twenty-two, which usually gives us more favorable costs for construction. So I would entertain any questions the board might have regarding this.
Hi, Susan. Alderman Gillum.
Yes, Mr. President, I authorize the president to sign on our behalf the resolution for the Vermont Transportation Alternative Program. So move.
We need to suspend the rules.
Oh, I'm sorry, suspend the rules.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, then Alderman Gillum.
I'd like to move the original proposal that I put on the floor, so move.
Second.
All right, very good, so Alderman Gillum made a motion to authorize the board president to sign on behalf of the board. I believe Alderman Mavis seconded. Alderman Garusa.
Just a quick question, in signing this, is there like a mousetrap or something, or if we don't get the, or the organization doesn't get the grant money, the city has to come up with the seventy-five thousand?
No, the, the grant agreement, it has to be signed by the city, and we would not ask the city to sign the grant agreement without the matching funds in place. We have never asked the city to, we have funds raised at this point that are sitting at the Regional Planning Commission, and, and prior to signing any contracts for any work, be it engineering or construction or construction inspection, we have always invoiced the Regional Planning Commission and had the matching funds in place at City Hall before the city signs a contract with anyone to expend any funds. These grants are reimbursable. The, what happens is the contractors build the city, and then Barbara works to requisition the funds from the state. But, but we have never had the city sign a contract without the matching funds in place, and.
Then maybe I fell asleep, I thought you said that we were, you were trying to, to get the grant for the seventy-five thousand dollars here, if I'm looking at the right grant application for Vtrans.
No, the grant is for.
And you told me you have the grant, then why are we filling out the application?
The grant, we have two different grants right now that were previously given to segment five of the pass. When we shifted the funds from segment five to segment three, we have two different grants in place. One is for, one is through a bike-ped grant that was given in two thousand fourteen, and one is a Transportation Alternatives Grant that was in two thousand seventeen. Together, they total one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. The required match for those two grants is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. That total is not sufficient to cover the cost of construction and construction inspection for, based on the very rough cost estimate that the engineer has developed for segment three. So we are applying for the maximum permitted under the transportation, we would like to, I should say, three hundred thousand. The three hundred thousand federal and state funds requires a local match of seventy-five thousand dollars. That we have raised part of which, and part of which we will raise through in-kind, once we get the quantities, we can go to Steve Wilk, and we can go to Pratiko, and we could go to Carpen and Costin, and the land that Green Mountain Power has graciously said we could use becomes part of our in-kind match, the value of that land, that easement. So, so the, the grant is for three hundred thousand dollars, requiring a seventy-five thousand dollar match.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Clifford.
Susan, this is simply, what we're signing is the grant application, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, comments, discussion? I'm hearing and seeing none, so we have a motion, it's been seconded to authorize the board.
Alderman Mavis can handle it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see you. Alderman Mavis, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment, just to say how excited I am that this project is continuing, especially given our new gym over at the old CSJ campus, so this is a wonderful thing, and. So this is a wonderful thing and, um, so glad that, um, this is, uh, becoming a reality. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Mattis. Any, Alderman Gillum?
Yes, this is finally gonna happen. We're finally gonna have a waterfront in our city. So I think we really need to get behind this because it's great for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Any further discussion, debate, or questions for Susan? I am hearing and seeing none. So we have a motion that has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Alright, up next, we have Attorney Blumer. He did us all a favor and got rid of the executive session. Uh, so now we have requests to seek RFPs for professional engineering services for Act 20, uh, 250 permit. Attorney Blumer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So both of these requests are in relation to the CSJ purchase. And the charter requires that for any professional services, that the board authorize the mayor to invite proposals for those services. So the first one relates to some engineering services that may be needed with respect to, uh, an amendment of the current Act 250 permit. Um, I sent that, sent you out a copy of, um, of what we would plan to send out. Again, this is just, uh, the authorization to invite proposals. And then those would come back and the, the mayor and some other folks will, you know, make a formal recommendation back to the board for the actual, um, who would be selected and, and the contract under which the work would be done. So I can give you a motion to, to put on the table for discussion or, or to suspend the rules, I guess, to put it on.
Suspend the rules.
We have, suspend the rules. They were seconded. Alderman Gillum. Uh, all of those in favor concerning the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer, if you want to give us the language for that motion, go ahead.
Sure. So the motion would be to authorize the mayor to invite proposals for engineering services related to, um, an Act 250 permit.
Come on.
Okay.
A motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on this issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, Attorney Blumer, we have you up again. Request to seek RFPs for professional engineering services for stormwater runoff mitigation.
Thank you. Yep. So a very similar request, um, also related to the CSJ purchase. Um, the state has a, um, a regulation called the, um, kind of quote unquote, three acre rule, that if you have more than three acres of impervious surface, you are required to do some stormwater runoff mitigation so that the, um, stormwater doesn't run directly into the waterways. Um, so that's another, uh, part of this purchase where we would need some engineering services um, to, uh, help us determine what the alternatives are and what, what those would cost. Um, so we're looking for, um, again, the board to authorize the mayor to invite proposals for someone to help, um, investigate and design, um, those, uh, uh, different alternatives. And again, I, yep, if you suspend the rules, then I can give you the official motion.
I'll suspend the rules. I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
And the rules have been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Blumer, if you'd like to give us the language, please.
And then it would be a motion to authorize the mayor to invite proposals for engineering services related to stormwater runoff mitigation.
Come on.
Second.
Alright, so a motion has been seconded. Uh, is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer, will we have you? Would it make sense for you to introduce the city-owned properties recommendation?
Sure. I'm actually gonna turn it over to Tara, but I can just, uh, maybe that's all I need to do, actually. She, she was nice enough to put together the memo. Um, and I, I told her I would send it out today to everybody that, so that they could, um, get a sneak peek of it. But, um, she can probably go through, uh, the particulars of, um, um, what the committee determined and what motions, um, the city is seeking to dispose of those properties. I believe she's on.
Very good. Tara, take it up.
Sure. So the city-owned properties committee met and reviewed proposals, uh, or offers to purchase from folks regarding two separate lots within the Stonegate communities. Um, first is 32 Griswold Drive and the second is 34 Griswold Drive. And as the memo indicates, um, we are, uh, recommending that the offers that were received, um, be, uh, considered by the board and, and if you so choose, that the properties, um, be sold to these folks. So for 32 Griswold Drive, we have, um, Michelle Lafferty. She's an adjacent property owner. She's offering 3,000 dollars for that lot. Um, and that is the, uh, recommendation from the committee is that her offer be accepted. For 34 Griswold Drive, um, the, um, offer is for 10,000 dollars from Ann Harrington, who is also an adjacent property owner to that property. So in both cases, the plan is for, uh, folks to basically expand their yards. Um, and, uh, each of those should probably be, um, be considered separately. So in the memo, there is a suggestion for language that can be used if, uh, the board chooses to, uh, move forward with these.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
A motion to suspend has been seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Davis.
Um, I'll move to authorize the sale of 32 Griswold Drive to Michelle L. Lafferty for the purchase price of 3,000 dollars pursuant to six dash two of the Rutland City Charter and to further authorize the mayor to sign all sale-related documents.
Motion and Alderman Gillum has seconded. Um, is there any discussion or debate? I am hearing and seeing none. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll move to authorize the sale of 34 Griswold Drive to Ann Harrington for the purchase price of 10,000 dollars pursuant to six dash two of the Rutland City Charter and to further authorize the mayor to sign all document sale, excuse me, all sale-related documents.
That's a motion. It's been seconded by Alderman Gillum. Uh, is there any discussion or? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion. Uh, thank you very much, Tara. And actually, while we have you, I believe we added the zoning amendment to the agenda. So would you like to take that up right now, please?
Sure. Um, I know some of you were in the public hearing earlier, so this might sound familiar. But, um, what has been put forward are some amendments to the zoning. Um, the initial impetus was to look at the lands of the former College of St. Joseph and consider, um, what the zoning should look like for those lands, knowing that the college had gone out of operation and there was a, um, a move to potentially sell off those properties. So, um, that was the initial impetus. And then while we were working on that amendment at the planning commission level, um, we also looked at updates, uh, that are required for our zoning to be in conformance with title, uh, excuse me, um, the state statute, which is, uh, 24 VSA, chapter 117. That, uh, constitutes a majority of additional changes as well as, um, some points that were clarified. At the charter and ordinance committee, we had gone through it point by point. There is an annotation that, uh, details, uh, what changes have been made. Um, and all of those, all of those annotations and the drafts that you received in advance for this meeting incorporate any changes that were made at the committee level or at the Board of Aldermen meeting, um, on November 2nd. So what's before you now, um, are those. The only comments that were received on the draft, uh, at both the planning commission level and at the public hearing this evening were from, um, folks that are potentially, uh, from what I understand, under contract to purchase some of the lands and have a plan for future development. And, uh, they are in favor of the, uh, proposed changes, um, as drafted. And this is regarding the College of St. Joseph, uh, lands. Beyond that, um, we didn't receive any significant comment on the rest. And just in response to John Roggerio's, uh, um, comments earlier, this is not, uh, the major rewrite of the document. It is in fact just, uh, some amendments to the existing zoning, as you point out, that's been in effect for a while. Um, there is a move, uh, as I've said to you before, um, for us to consider wider rewrite of the ordinance and very specifically looking at, um, the role, uh, and how we regulate multifamily housing is one of those. And the other is gateway districts. So, um, while that lines right up with what his concerns are, we just haven't gotten to the stage of delving deeply into those yet. And he will be informed, um, at the point we get to that. So, thank you. That's all for my comments.
Thank you, Tara. Alderman Mattis.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanted to, um, uh, mention that this is basically a reaffirmation of a motion that, uh, was made last time we met and was approved by the board, um, but that, um, we wanted to refresh it because, um, because of the hearing that we had, uh, today. So I'm ready to make that motion, which is that, um, I move that the board adopt the new land use development regulations as presented this evening, including changes to the zoning map delineating a new district to be known as the Campus Development District. In keeping with 24 VSA 4412, this adoption will become effective on December 8th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on this issue? Alderman Garuso.
Yeah, I'll be voting no. I haven't had a chance to see it. I had a death in the family or two this morning. My wife's, um, mother passed, um, and the only thing I got from zoning is a 152-page document after five o'clock that I don't have a printer that's big enough to print. So unfortunately, something I've not read, seen, or had a chance to absorb, I can't, um, I can't, I can't vote on. I'm gonna have to vote no because I don't know. Thank you.
Alderman Mattis.
Um, yeah, I, I just want to respond to Alderman Garuso. This is exactly the same, uh, document um, that the board approved two weeks ago. Um, so, uh, and I believe you were there at our, at our meeting. So it, it's not anything new. It's just, uh, a reaffirmation of the vote that we took, uh, two weeks ago. I mean, feel free to vote no, um, but I believe you voted yes before and, and nothing has changed, just, just so you know.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And those opposed?
No.
I think I tell you don't have to roll call. Alright, uh, we are going to decline to do a roll call because we can clearly see that there's one vote in the negative for this. Uh, motion passes. Uh, thanks, Tara. Alright, we are now on to Treasurer Markowski, uh, fiscal year 20 audit engagement for Board of Review, uh, Board of Aldermen Review and Approval. This is pages 10 through 21 of your packet. And I'll note that, uh, Treasurer Markowski is not here with us tonight. Uh, Alderman Torey.
Move to authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded, authorizing the board chair to sign. Uh, is there any discussion or debate on this issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And then we have up next Treasurer's report for October 31st, 2020. This was emailed to you all. Alderman Torey.
Uh, motion to a receiving file.
Second.
So a motion has been seconded, uh, to receiving. Debate on this? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. We are now on to Commissioner Wenberg, Engineering Service Contracts, Final Design, Combination and Piedmont Ponds. This, uh, would have been forwarded to you this morning by Henry, but I, I believe Jeff may have actually sent this out, uh, Friday, so I don't know if you got it down. But you should have it in your email. Uh, Commissioner Wenberg.
Hi, um, no, I did not send it out Friday, so hopefully, um, folks have had some time to look at it. Um, so this is for the engineering services contract. The, there have been some change in, uh, approach that we've, uh, decided to take in consultation, uh, with the city engineer and the mayor on this. This is combination pond and Piedmont Pond. Uh, we require, we've made very good progress, but we require a final design for permitting and construction for the plantings and the pond and the dam modifications, uh, the, the dredging and so forth that are all part of the, uh, the preliminary design and the work that was approved by the neighbors through the public process and also confirmed by the state, uh, as meeting the requirements of the TMDL. So we're, we're moving ahead with that. The funding for this has been the most recent hurdle. Um, we were, the, the city was the first recipient of a watershed, uh, amendment, watershed improvement grant, a whisper grant. Um, and, um, that is tied to the, uh, bonds that were passed by the voters two years ago for the wastewater projects that are underway and being completed now. Um, that grant right now, uh, is about 670,000 dollars that we will have available to do the construction work, um, here. That's not sufficient based on the preliminary estimate to get all of the work done. We had hoped initially and discussed with the board that we would be, um, using that, those funds as match to another program through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers 542 program, which we also qualified for. However, in, um, going through that process and working out the partnership agreement uh, with the Corps of Engineers and the, uh, project management plan, we came to realize that there is a serious mismatch between our project and their program. Uh, their program takes care of projects up to a billion dollars, you know, big gigantic projects. And ours at, uh, a little over a million dollars is way too small. It seems like a lot to us, but it's way too small. And their overhead and the costs that they will bring to it are proving to be quite excessive. So, um, we've passed along kind of the bad news because the, the folks at the Corps, this is the Albany office, have been exceedingly wonderful to work with. I can't say enough about them. Um, but we, we told them, and I have some of the details in the memo, an example, uh, of, you know, kind of the mismatch of where we have a roughly 150, 125 to 150,000 dollar final design project with our engineers, which the Corps will review and do some permitting. And their review will cost roughly three times what the actual design costs. Um, so it doesn't seem like an efficient use of public money regardless of, uh, of the actual source. So in any event, we do have the 670,000 dollars. Furthermore, in discussions with the, the, um, agency, uh, we are also eligible for a, a planning advance. we are also eligible for a planning advance under the Clean Water State Revolving Fund for the design. The design cost in the attached contract is $126,000. And this can be funded through a grant, or excuse me, a loan from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which upon completion is forgiven. So it's a 100% forgivable loan, I guess. It's, it's works like a grant, but it's a forgivable loan. So we believe that the most efficient way to proceed is to go ahead with the Engineering Services Contract pending approval of the planning advance, the forgivable planning advance. And, but we wanted to bring this to you even though that has not, that actually the application is just being done now because the winter is coming and some of the activities, specifically data collection that are required to be done in the field are going to need to be done before the pond ice is over, et cetera. So what we're asking for is conditional approval of the Engineering Services Contract. Final approval to be given when we have the grant money, but that we would go ahead and prior to that authorize up to $20,000 for data collection, which we would fund through the operating budget in the stormwater program or the, or the whisper funds or a combination of the two. Sorry about the complexity of that, but I thought the board, we have briefed the board previously on the 542 program. But the deeper we dug into it and the closer we got to a negotiated plan and budget, the more we realized that the cost of this was getting significantly out of control. And we would be spending at 35% substantial sums of money to match substantially greater sums of money that the Corps would spend. And instead, it just made more sense to use the money to do the work. Now, that, that 670 isn't enough to get it done. We believe it will get us a long way toward the first phase, which the design would set up in phases. And the first phase would be the heavy construction, the dredging and the dam modifications, which are certainly beyond our capabilities. The, the subsequent phase or phases are things that in the worst set of circumstances, we could pretty much do ourselves. It's tree plantings and riparian modifications. It's, it's earthwork and, and tree plantings. So we have the equipment. If funds are available, we will, we continue to seek them. We certainly would prefer to do it in that fashion. But even if that's not the case, we believe we can get this project completed sooner. And it's substantially lower cost to federal and state taxpayers. Local taxpayers don't have any money in this thing, other than through their federal and state taxes, I suppose. But that, that's how we would propose to proceed and are asking for approval contingent as stated in the summary on the memo. I, there bound to be questions on this, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Wenberg. Alderwoman Humphrey.
Thanks. Commissioner Wenberg, what's the, the name of the attachment that the memo is in? I'm sorry, there's a lot of attachments sent today and I'm trying to sift through them to read the exact request.
I guess Henry sent that out. The act, the memo is titled Engineering Services Contract Final Design Combination of Piedmont Ponds.
Alderman Humphrey, that, I believe right around 9 o'clock this morning that went out.
Okay.
It's dated November 13th.
Alderman Grosso.
Yes, I had to get the mic on. I had to stop out for a second, but if people are not looking for it, I got mine from Henry. And I'm sorry if I don't know what the, what you guys are questioning. I read it. It looks pretty comprehensive. And as far as I'm concerned, I think it's something we should do here. It looks like a great idea. I know the ponds well and think it's something we need to get moving on.
Alderwoman Humphrey.
Thanks. So to be clear, I'm not in disagreement with it being a good project. I was, I live in this neighborhood near the pond and I was part of the process. Jeff did a very good job of making sure that everybody was able to participate that wanted to. I'm, just not 100% clear on the ask and, and I apologize. If the board chooses, I'd still move forward with it tonight, but I'm just wondering, what is, what's the timeline on doing this? Do we need to, do we need to give you a thumbs up tonight? Or is this something we could potentially discuss in a committee meeting? My concern is, it sounds like you want approval to move ahead minus a grant that we thought we might get in anticipation of getting a different grant. And so I'm just wondering if we go ahead and authorize starting on the work and something else runs afoul like it has, how much would we be on the hook? And would we, it sounds like we wouldn't end up with like a dredged pond and then just stuff like that because the remainder of the work is possible for us to do within the city, it sounds like. But what would we be on the hook for if the new plan goes not as planned?
Well, the, the request here is just for the Engineering Services for the final design. And we would give the engineers, if approved by the board, authorization to proceed only with the $20,000 for data collection, because that's the only part of it that's time sensitive, seasonally time sensitive. The balance of it, which is $106,000, we would not authorize them to do until the planning advance was approved by the state. That's not time sensitive. They can get that done over the winter so that come spring, we could know, for example, you know, the first phase, how much the available dollars that we have in the existing whisper grant can go towards the heavy construction. And then go out to bid for that and try to get as much of that or all of it done in construction season 2021. That would be the quickest we could possibly do it. But what we'd be asking for here is you approve the contract contingent on the award of the, of the planning advance, but allow the $20,000 data collection portion to proceed even prior to that, which we can cover with either the whisper funds or we have a $15,000 line item in the stormwater budget, which would pay for, you know, three quarters of this if it's not otherwise obligated, which I don't believe it is at this point.
Alderman Clifford. Are you wrong, Neil, Paul?
Do we suspend the rules?
Yep.
Yeah, I will just suspend the rules, take this matter up.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and it's been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And I would move that, I would move that the, the board authorized the mayor to execute the attached Engineering Services Agreement with Malone and McBroom in the amount of $126,000 to complete the final design and permitting for modifications to combination pond and dam and Piedmont Pond and Dam. The authorization is contingent upon award of a planning advance from the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, covering the cost of the work, with the exception of $20,000 for data collection, which needs to be, to proceed immediately. I still move.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on this?
The only thing is, Alderman Clifford, I think it says for Mr. Wenberg to sign it.
Did it say that? I gotta fix that.
I'm reading the mayor.
All right, well.
Am I wrong? I don't know.
It, it says the mayor.
All right.
Although either could probably work, but we usually.
Signature, signature page is Jeffrey Wenberg, so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Either the mayor or the commissioner, however it works.
Yeah, Malone and McBroom, I guess they, they put my name in there, but that's not technically correct. We can fix that by crossing it out and putting in David Alair's name easily.
Very good. Any further discussion or debate on this issue? Hearing and seeing none. We have a motion. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Does the dog count?
Yes, we did note that the dog voted in the affirmative for this. And Christian Wenberg, I believe we have you up again with the GMP request that you brought along to us.
Yes, and I appreciate you putting that on the agenda. It was something that came up late. Unfortunately, this happens frequently. This is actually a request from the city attorney and, and my department. The form that is being presented as an attachment under corrective easement deed and agreement with GMP is their draft, which the city attorney is, is reviewing at this time and Matt can speak to that. That's why there is a phrase in the requested motion that it be approved, the mayor authorized to sign, pending final approval of legal counsel, because he may, I think he already has a couple of things he'd like to tweak. And that has to be worked out with GMP. But we'd like, because of the desire to get as much of this work done again, we're only two years behind on this project through no fault of ours at all. But we'd like to get, moving on this thing before winter sets in and the city engineer is working very hard with Green, Green Mountain Power to do that. We require two easements in order to put this pipe in the new path, which is very, is right next to the path that was originally, we already have the easement for. But it, it requires a slight adjustment, corrective easement deed actually is what it is with Green Mountain Power for their property that's at the end of Greens Hill Lane near the wastewater treatment plant. So this has been developed and reviewed. The city attorney can go over that process. Green Mountain Power is happy to, to, happy to get us out of their hair and get this over with and get this project done. So, but the terms, the city attorney needs to finally approve and work out. So that's, that's the request. There is another actual easement that is required. That will be from Beldon, who is the abutter. But we don't actually have to, that is a one-way thing that Beldon would simply sign. That draft has already been prepared and I believe it's been sent to them. So it doesn't require the mayor's signature. It's basically a grant to the city of, of rights in that corridor that, along the property boundary. So that doesn't require board approval. But this one does because there are some obligations that the city has under the document. And therefore, it's in the form of an agreement, not just a one-way easement. Again, this is unfortunately necessary because of the difficulties we had trying to get the forest main installed through lateral drilling that failed. And we are now have redesigned. The redesign will be an open trench, which is conventional installation. And, and unfortunately, in order to meet all of Green Mountain Power's needs, which are more than reasonable, we have to kind of work to the edge of the easement and need to make these adjustments in order to make sure we have a proper control of all the real estate that will be affecting.
Thank you, Commissioner Wenberg. So I believe we need a motion to suspend.
It's all moved.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And I believe the motion that you are looking for is the board to authorize the mayor to sign a corrective easement deed in agreement with Green Mountain Power pending final review of legal counsel.
It's all moved.
It's all moved.
Second.
Whatever.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, would you please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And Alderwoman Humphrey does abstain because of her working relationship with Green Mountain Power. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wenberg. All right, I believe that takes care of reports and letters from department heads and officials. So we are on to reports of standing committees. Up first, we have Alderwoman Mattis, Charter and Ordinance, and I believe you emailed this to us. I don't remember the exact time, though.
It was, it was pretty late there, Mr. President. I apologize. It might have been 4:30 or 5:00. So the Charter and Ordinance Committee met on November 10th, 2020. Committee members present were Alderman Rebecca Mattis, the Chair, Melinda Humphrey, Chris Satori, and Bill Gillum. Others present were board, others present were Board President Matt Whitcomb, Alderman Michael Talbot, Brennan Duffy, and Dave Cooper from the RRA, zoning administrator Tara Kelly, building inspector Bob Pelletier, and Gordon Gracillo from the Herald. And I note that Alderman Gillum, unbeknownst to those of us who were there, joined the meeting by phone actually, but wasn't allowed to unmute himself. And so he could not participate in the discussion, but he was listening in. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. A proposed sign ordinance was presented to the Board of Aldermen about two years ago. And since that time, major changes have been requested by the committee. The Chair has sought input from the entire board, the business community, sign professionals, and others in city government in order to draft the desired changes. This new draft was emailed to the board several days before the meeting. On the agenda was to review the changes, starting with page one. Minor changes agreed upon in committee will not be noted in these minutes, but are in the annotations that had been presented to the board along with the new draft. The committee agreed to strike the prohibition of roof signs. And the Chair will draft language to regulate those signs as to size and height and any other appropriate consideration. Similarly, agreed to allow hanging and projecting signs in all districts, but to add language that regulates them appropriately in each district. Agreeing that monument signs are not suitable to the character of residential areas, the committee decided to prohibit them in residential districts. Much of them spent discussing the signed district. A rough draft of a signed district map had been presented by the planning two years ago. This draft was altered according to the input the Chair received from the whole board and the committee discussed the new draft. The signed districts are designated by color. In the newest draft, red is downtown. Orange consists of major corridors and other retail and commercial zones, such as Woodstock Avenue, North Main, and West Street. Yellow is mostly residential. Green consists of historical areas with very little retail, mostly along Main Street. And blue consists of the busiest corridors in the city with the highest traffic and the widest roadways. The committee agreed that the intersection of Routes 4 and 7 should be blue to match South Main Street, meaning that these areas would have larger sign limits than the rest of the, larger size limits than the rest of the city. We also agreed that the southern parts, the southern part of Strong's Avenue should be orange. That is, it should have sign sizes and heights that are similar, that are smaller than the blue district, but larger than red or green and similar to Woodstock Avenue. One of the most significant changes to the proposed ordinance as originally presented is in the size and height allowances. The board as a whole was concerned with the effectiveness of signs as well as the attractiveness of the city as a whole. It was agreed that very tall and very large signs create a cluttered, unattractive signscape and should be prohibited. But the board's understanding of what constitutes an. But the board's understanding of what constitutes an effective or appropriate sign was larger than what had been presented to us originally. For blue districts, the sign area limit was increased from thirty-two square feet to seventy-five square feet. Orange increased from sixteen to fifty. Green increased from twelve to thirty-two, and red increased from sixteen to thirty-two square feet. Sign height limits were similarly increased by about fifty percent. The committee then discussed window signs. Building Inspector Bob Pelletier cautioned the committee that window signs effectively are wall signs, allowing businesses willing to fill their window with signs to exceed their allowed area of wall signage. We decided to prohibit window signs in historical districts and maintain their prohibition in residential districts, while maintaining the twenty-five percent limit on how much of the window can be used for signs in the orange and blue districts. We decided that the red district downtown should have a greater allowance for window signs, perhaps sixty-six percent. The Chair will present an analysis of current practice at a later meeting. The final item on the agenda was lighted signs. Since the board decided not to prohibit internally illuminated signs as presented originally, new language had to be drafted to regulate such signs. Discussed Figure Three in the new draft, which regulates the type of illuminated signs in each district. We agreed that externally illuminated signs should be allowed everywhere in the city, except that the signs of home occupations should be limited as to time of day. The Chair will draft language to this effect for a future meeting. We agreed that internally illuminated signs should be prohibited in historic and residential districts. We also agreed that within the orange district, internal illumination should only be allowed along Woodstock Avenue, West Street, Main Street, Strong's Avenue, and for emergency health services. There was a question as to whether this kind of street-specific regulation would be workable, but zoning administrator Kelly assured the committee that it is not uncommon and is easy to administer. Electronic message boards, called E M Bs, presented some disagreement. The newest draft proposes that E M Bs should be prohibited in most districts, and only be allowed in the blue district, as well as along Woodstock Avenue only in the orange district. Some among the committee and the board believe that E M Bs present an unattractive face to residents and visitors. Others see them as an appropriate marketing tool. Alderman Atori wishes to see them allowed wherever internally illuminated signs are allowed. The committee chair believes that this will not do enough to protect residential properties throughout the city or preserve an attractive city for the future. This disagreement becomes most important in areas of the city that have a mixture of business and residential properties. The signed district boundaries must be drawn, and the regulations within those districts be created to balance the needs of businesses and residents. The committee specifically discussed the central portion of State Street west of Pine. This area is mostly residential, though it is zoned to encourage business development. Whether the businesses in that area should be allowed internally illuminated signs or electronic message boards is a subject that will need to be discussed further. Other questions that came up is the designation of Allen Street. Should it have signs that are more like Woodstock Avenue or more like the historical areas of the city? What do sign professionals believe is the future demand for electronic message boards? These questions will be addressed at a later date. This discussion brought the committee up to Section Nine, specific standards for all of the different sign types. The next committee meeting will begin there, as well as address unanswered questions from this meeting. And this report is for information only, and the meeting adjourned about seven twenty-five P M. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Mattis. Are there any questions? Alderman Atori.
Thanks. Not so much a question, but I just wanted to share with the rest of the board my appreciation for the work that Alderwoman Mattis has done on this sign ordinance. As you, as you know, when we got this ordinance, it was really a different product. And Alderwoman Mattis has gone around to, as everyone, as the people she mentioned at the beginning of this, businesses, community members, Board of Aldermen members, to really try to get a sense of what the community thinks is appropriate. This is a different draft than we were presented with. And I just am appreciative of that, and I want to make sure that we do our due diligence in looking at the new draft versus maybe holding any preconceived ideas that we might have had two years ago when we initially got this draft. This, I think it is as community and business-friendly as possible for a sign ordinance to have. So again, my appreciation to Alderwoman Mattis for her work on that.
Thank you, Alderman Atori. Any other comments, questions, feedback for Alderman Mattis? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much for your report. We are on to Alderman Clifford, General Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The General Committee met virtually on November fifth, two thousand and twenty. I called the meeting to order at five thirty P M. Present were committee members DePoy, Garuso, Mattis. Also present was President Whitcomb, Alderwoman Davis, Talbot, Alderman Atori, and Alderman Gillum. The discussion began regarding a motion by Alderman DePoy to put a non-binding question on the March twenty-twenty-one ballot relative to keeping the Rutland Raider name along with the arrowhead symbol. Board President Whitcomb had previously directed Committee Chair Alderwoman Humphrey to hold the meeting relative to the motion. Upon her declining to hold the meeting, I felt it was an obligation to chair the meeting. Several people spoke in favor and in favor and against the proposed Raider name change. Alderman DePoy spoke in favor for keeping the Raider name and felt it was important to have the voters, taxpayers, and students have a voice in the process and not just to have the school board members make that decision. Alderman Garuso stated that he supported putting the question on the ballot because that is what people wanted and explained that people have a right to have a say in the matter. Alderwoman Mattis explained her view of due process regarding ballot items that she has seen during the time she has lived in Rutland. Explained her view of how the school board did their due diligence in dealing with the subject at hand. Alderwoman Davis stated that during her tenure on the Board of Aldermen, there have been many questions placed on the ballot, such as the ten and nine. She explained that it was, it was good for Aldermen to hear from the public, to find a solution, agreeable to the public. She explained that decision to keep or change the Raider name was ultimately up to the school board. Alderman Talbot stated that there was some harm in putting the question on the ballot. He felt the vote would be embarrassing, and that Rutland's reputation was not the best, referring to the issue of the city being too racist to welcome Syrian families. And we don't need to be labeled the city that is too racist to retire its Native American imagery. Alderman DePoy stated dissatisfaction with Alderman Talbot's comments. In highlighted, public, in the highlighted public comment portion, several residents and students spoke on the issue. Butch Paul spoke in favor of keeping the name and how he felt it was important to have a people, have the people have their voice heard. Ann Carpenter spoke in favor of keeping the name to, and to listen to the taxpayers. Kyle Miller spoke in favor of having people's opinions heard. Jill Thigergold spoke against bringing the question to a vote, and that it may lead to further harm and divisiveness. Jacob Pluta was concerned that the Board of Aldermen was out of its purview to take up the matter and agreed with statements by Alderman, Alderwoman Mattis. He stated he thought the matter was the school board's decision and hopes that both sides remain civil. Helen Juliuson spoke about white supremacy and that she had a tattoo. She felt that having a meeting on subject was wrong because the board did not have a meeting on bias training, and that it was textbook racism. Rutland High School student Jenna Montgomery stated that the issue was disrespectful. Jack Arthur spoke in favor of putting the question on the ballot. Stephanie Studley thanked the Board of Aldermen for having the meeting and spoke in favor of putting the question on the ballot. In conclusion, the committee found that fifteen people spoke in favor of putting the question on the ballot. Ten people spoke against it. Alderman DePoy moved to recommend to the full board that a question be placed on the March ballot stating, should Rutland City School of, School Board of School Commissioners change the Rutland Raider name and its logo to Rutland High School? The motion was seconded by Alderman Garuso, and the committee voted three to one, with Alderman Garuso, DePoy, and Clifford, Clifford voting in favor, and Alderwoman Mattis voting against, and so moved. There being no further business, the committee adjourned at six thirty-four P M. So I would also move that motion, Mr. Chairman, to the full board.
You have a motion. Alderman DePoy has seconded. I will now go up to discussion debate from members of the board. I'm hearing and seeing none. In that case, I will, Alderwoman Mattis.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, were you going to hear from the, the public now? I, I was, I was looking forward to, you, you wanted to hear from the board first and the public after. I guess I wanted to hear from the public first.
Okay. A very reasonable challenge I'm going to have for all of you joining us from the public is I can't see any of you. But if you are here and you would like to speak, go ahead and do so, and the, the first name I hear, I will call upon you. If you so wish to speak, open it up right now.
Mr. Chairman, I hope you have a minute or so on him. You have a limit there, please.
Yes, if, I would ask that people not speak for longer than a minute if they so wish. Now is your opportunity if you would like to, for any comment.
John Atwood would like to speak.
John Atwood. Go ahead. You have a minute.
Thank you. I would just like to affirm that I feel strongly that what Alderman Talbot said at the General Committee meeting makes a lot of sense. I think that this issue was dealt with properly by the school board. I think that bringing this before the voters in a non-binding resolution will be a waste of time at best, and divisive and attract negative attention to Rutland Atwood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atwood. Other members of the public who wish to, for their feedback, comments to the board?
Hi.
Rachel.
I think I heard Rachel. Is that correct?
Yes, I did. So thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I just want to thank you all for your time tonight. I want to echo what the speaker before me just said, and I think we already saw that the Vermont Supreme Court has set the precedent that the school board are the deciding body for this decision, and I think we, the school has already decided, the school board decided that in February, they would be moving forward with a new mascot. The school is, the students are part of this decision that's being moved forward. Having a non-binding referendum in March would just create more problems and divisiveness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rachel. Other members of the public who wish to speak on the issue?
Samantha Cohen.
Samantha, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thanks for the holding this meeting tonight and for allowing us to comment, and I just will shortly echo what the two previous public speakers said. I think it's clear that this is legally not an issue that the public can decide, and that the authority to change the mascot lies with the school board. And I also think that the people of the city of Rutland and the Rutland community have had a lot of opportunities to voice their opinions through the two public opportunities that the school board held. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Other members of the public who wish to address the board?
Hello. Hello.
Hi. Hi, it says Rutland Raider Green. What's your name?
Yes, please. Trisha O'Connor.
Trisha O'Connor, thank you.
Yes. So I am an actual city resident, and I know that, that the narrative speaking, being spoken regularly is that everybody had a chance to talk and discuss it. If that were the case, I wouldn't be adamant that I have input and the community has input. There was an obvious motion for a select group of people that wanted to really get their agenda pushed through. I have been paying taxes in this city for sixteen years, and to be shut down like that is just not acceptable. You guys were elected to serve the people of the city, and in, when one system fails you, I think it's time for you guys to step up and support the taxpayers who will continue to be paying for stuff here in the city. I just think it would be the respectful thing to do. And I disagree about it creating further chaos. I think, to be honest, if this doesn't work in our favor tonight, I, I don't think it's going to change things either way. I think that we are very passionate in wanting to be heard. So I would really appreciate it if people would reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trisha. Other members of the public who wish to speak to the board on this?
Amanda Pagano.
Amanda, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I would just like to reiterate what I had said at the last meeting, and that is, I too am a Rutland City taxpayer. And I, you know, I question and have not been given an answer to where is this funding going to come from to change all of the, the logos, the billboards, or I mean, the, the all the signage, the gym floor, uniforms, all of the things that we just recently have updated, and most of it having some sort of Raider logo attached to it. You know, we can't get a clear answer on that from anybody, so in my thinking is that it's going to be buried somewhere in the Rutland City Public School budget, and that, to me, becomes then a voteable issue by the taxpayers. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here, and I think we have a right as taxpayers to have some say in that. And if you are not a Rutland City Public Resident, Rutland City resident, then you really need to understand that that is something that is very important to us as voters and as taxpayers.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Hello?
Other members. Yes, I thought, I thought Jean Marie. Is that correct?
Yes, this is Jean Marie Walker, and thank you for having the meeting and considering this issue. I believe that the Raider logo should be changed, and I believe that it is within the purview of this, of the school board to do that. And I do feel like, I, I mean, I understand that people have strong feelings on both sides, but I, I believe that the right thing to do, to be respectful to all people, including the Indigenous people, is to change that logo, and the school board and the Vermont Superintendent's Association have already said that that's what should happen. So I, I guess I think it's futile for the school, I mean, the, the city to put it up for a vote. I mean, you can, but it, it's not going to really change anything, and it's going to cost money to do that, I would assume. So anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Other members of the public who wish to address the board on this issue?
Jessie Wilson.
Jessie Wilson. The floor is yours.
Hi, I just wanted to, I second what the person in front of me had said. I am in favor of changing the mascot. I think that, or I am grateful to have been a part of speaking in front of the Board of Aldermen, in front of the school board. And though I appreciate that the ability to have this conversation, I do think that the school board took the correct steps and that, that was the rightful body to make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members who wish to address the board?
Stephanie Studley.
Stephanie, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing the public and another opportunity to speak. It seems that the Board of Alderman are asking and getting more public comments than the school board. Um, I've been thinking for a few weeks why various members of the Board of Alderman would vote no to have the Raider name changed, um, and to have it put on the ballot in March. What would it hurt to have something go on the ballot that is non-binding? I believe that the Board of Alderman don't want to know that they are in the wrong by a three to one margin. The city voters are who elected you, so why would you not want to listen to the voters? By not voting for this to be on the ballot, you are no better than the school board who wouldn't listen to anybody but a select few. I am asking as a city taxpayer and voter to let the voices be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on this matter?
Jacob Pausner.
Jacob, uh, floor is yours.
Uh, thanks for having us, uh, tonight. Uh, I appreciate giving the chance to talk. I'd just like to reiterate that I do believe this is in, clearly in the wheelhouse of the school board. Um, and if folks have further concerns, uh, they publicly warn meetings and you can speak during their public session. Thanks.
Thank you, Jacob. Are there other members of the, the community who wish to address the board?
Sharon Corcel.
Uh, Sharon Corcel, the floor is yours.
Yes, um, I disagree with the prior speaker and, um, I'm also a city taxpayer and, and I'm not sure, I've heard some people identify themselves as city taxpayers and others who have not and, and I'm hoping that it's more city taxpayers that are weighing in for this meeting, um, and not people who are not city taxpayers. Um, but I, I did want to, um, from the beginning, um, when I heard that this was, um, going to be coming out, um, months ago, uh, I had a feeling that it was going to be an issue. Um, the more, uh, I heard, uh, people is talking about it in, in close circles, um, I said, you know, it, it, to me, it sounds like something that needs to go to the public. There was enough hubbub going out, um, and around, um, that enough citizens concerned that, uh, my gut told me it needs to go to the public and more and more and more, uh, as time has gone on, i- it's just more and people have shown interest, have, um, been agitated over it. Um, why this, why this is not something that would go to the public, that is directly impacting the public with, as far as financially, um, as far as, it, it's obviously impacting the public. Why this does not go to the Alderman, the Board of Alderman and be taken away from the school board is beyond me. I think that the, the Board of Alderman, it's your duty to put this in your court tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on this?
Jenna Montgomery.
Uh, Jenna Montgomery, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. My name is Jenna Montgomery. I'm a junior at Wellin High School. As a vocally athlete, I know what it's like to be a Raider with this knowledge. I completely object to the idea of a citywide referendum, even a non-binding one. Our group is advocating for the rights of a minority group that has for a long time been squashed and reduced. This voice is the voice of a minority and hasn't continued to be suppressed if we allow this to become a numbers game. I'm not sure what good this would do. The decisions aren't even made and the process of removing the mascot is already underway. The public has had plenty of time to make sure its voice is heard and everyone has been given the same opportunities at various different school board meetings. Mr. Clifford, towards the beginning of the meeting, mentioned that putting this on the ballot would give a voice to parents, taxpayers and students. A majority of the students can't vote, but they were able to present the school board meeting as well as numerous other forums and the mascot replacement committee that's already been started at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on this matter?
Are we ready to call the question?
I will, I believe we will close it off to the public. I believe they've had their opportunity. I will bring it back inside the board at this point to see if there's any discussion comments that people would like to make. Um, Alderman Russo, I will begin with you.
There was some nice speaking tonight, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, you know, uh, there's a whole lot of things back twenty-something years ago when I was on the board, I, I said this then and I'll say it again. I was put here by my constituents to act on their behalf. I'm a taxpayer too and to try to make decisions on their behalf, but sometimes there are things that we need to let them, uh, do. Um, at the last election, I think about half of the ballot was empty. Um, so putting this on the ballot's not some cost to the city. Voters are going to go out and march to vote. There's no cost, there's no expense. Um, it's almost communistic to, for people to not be allowed to just say what their voice is on a non-binding item like this. We're not hurting anything, we're not hurting anyone, we're just letting people voice their opinion. That's all we're doing. And, you know, I just told some of you guys that, you know, my mother-in-law died at, 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 uh, just before two this morning and I went to sleep at a quarter of eleven and my phone started to go nuts at midnight and it was somebody trying to convince me to vote not to put this on the ballot, you know? And I thought it was my wife telling me that time had come, you know? Come on. I mean, this is just infatuation, um, one oh one. Get, get over it. Let's get it on the ballot. Let's let the voters do it. If it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't go anywhere. If it does, it does. I don't know where it's going to go. It's not hurting anything. It's not a cost to the city. Um, we've talked about this and talked about this. We've all gotten pho, phone calls, we've gotten emails, people stopping us on the street, but I've also had people that say, that don't have the nerve that, that people do to, to, to come before a meeting and, and express their opinion, okay? So let's let our, our constituents, let's let our friends, our people, our friends, our neighbors voice their opinion right in that little voting booth and let them say yes or no and let's see what happens on election night. That's all. It's not hurting anyone, it's not hurting anything. And again, it's non-binding. So I'll be voting to support this motion to put it on the ballot and not hearing it again until next March on election night. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, you did a great job on that.
Thank you, Alderman Russo. Uh, Alderman DePoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, um, this is a very important issue that is well beyond six or seven members of the school board to decide. Most of the callers today that have called in support of sending this to a vote and a referendum, non-binding, um, in this city in March have been, most of the people have been city taxpayers who are in favor of this because they know that the cost is several hundred thousand dollars at this point. Early estimates put it in the two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. People outside of this city that are in favor of changing the name have no financial burden in this. And I just think that it's, although this is an open meeting, I just think it's wrong of them to assume that the city taxpayers should foot the bill to have this name change done, especially in COVID, but also at any time, given that the tax rates in Rutland City are extraordinarily high. That said, there are also a huge amount of people in this city who are Raider graduates, Rutland High School graduates, who would like to weigh in on this and the school board derives its power from those people who would like to vote on this issue. Without the people of this city, the taxpayers of this city, then the school board would not have the power to do that. Now, people have brought up the fact that the school board has had a couple or three public hearings on this, but it's a very cumbersome process to get on the city school board, uh, Zoom meetings that they have. I find the go-to meeting that the city of Rutland and the Board of Alderman has is far simpler and much more reliable than the meetings that the school board held. There are a lot of people that have told me that. I am not the most technical, technologically advanced person, but I made sure that I was able to get on and it was cumbersome to get on. Pre-registration required, um, you know, you had to download the, the apps and everything and then there are people out there that cannot do that, who are in total disagreement with that school board. So they want their vote and it's, yeah, it's absolutely non-binding, but it will send a message to the school board what the maj, the vast majority, I believe, at least seventy to eighty percent of the people of the city, um, want a vote on this and want to keep the Raider name. So that's why it's very important for this board to exert its duty to the taxpayers here in the city of Rutland and put this on the ballot next March. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Other members of the board who wish to comment? Alderwoman Mattis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I really take this issue very seriously and I have a lot of respect for all of the principled arguments that I've heard. Um, and I can't say that I disagree with any of those arguments. Um, they, they're intelligent and respectful and as I said, principled. What I'm, what I keep getting hung up on though, my sticking point has to do with the roles of elected officials. And so the, the issue of the school nickname, as we all know, by legal precedent, does belong with the school board. And whether we would have done the job exactly the same as they did, you know, would we have held more meetings or used a different platform or gone a little more slowly, um, or whatever, you know, we can discuss that, but it's, it's kind of beside the point. They, they had a job and they did their job, um, whether you agree with the outcome or not. And, you know, public policy in Vermont is created by elected officials. We don't do direct referendums and I, and I know that we all know this and I know no one is disputing that, but when I'm doing my role as an elected official, I try to do it with all the dignity that I have and I'm following the principles, my principles as best I can. And I wouldn't be following my own principles if I didn't respect the roles of other elected officials. I- if I did something that would appear to undermine their decision or, or sidestep it, I, I wouldn't feel good about that. The school board was elected to do their job. Whether you agree with, agree with it or not, they did their job and, and it is not for me to try to, uh, sidestep that. So that is why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mattis. Any other members of the board who wish to debate, discuss, offer? I am hearing and seeing none, so we have a motion that states.
Roll call, Mr. Chairman. Roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, so we, we will call a roll call. Um, the motion is stated, should the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners change the Rutland Raider name and its logo at Rutland High School? That will be the question we are voting on. To vote in favor would be yes, we should place it on the ballot. To vote no would be to suggest no, do not put it on the ballot. I will now, that, that's a motion that's made, it has been seconded, but I now turn it over to Clerk Heck to call a roll call vote.
If I may, Mr. President. Uh, it also takes two-thirds of a vote in order for this to pass equally, so that would mean there would be seven yes, uh, votes necessary in order to place it on the ballot. I don't know if we want to confer with Attorney Blumer, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Uh, Attorney Blumer, if prior to taking the vote, you could just, uh, run down that charter, uh, charter rule really quick with all of them.
Uh, sure, Clerk Heck is correct that, um, I think all eleven members, uh, seem, seem to be here, so, um, you need two-thirds of all members that are voting in present. Uh, so, um, the, the chair doesn't generally vote, so that leaves you with ten and seven would be the number that is, creates the two-thirds, um, required to, for the board to put it on the, the ballot.
Thank you, Attorney Blumer. Uh, and now we're going to turn it over to Clerk Heck to call a roll. Alderman Russo.
Yes.
Alderwoman Humphrey.
No.
Alderwoman Bryan.
No.
Alderman Torrey.
No.
Alderman Talbot.
No.
Alderwoman Mattis.
No.
Alderman Gillum.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman DePoy.
Yes.
Alderwoman Davis.
Yes.
Five-five motion fails. The vote is five-five, uh, motion fails due to inability to reach the two-thirds required to place the item on the ballot.
So, even if I had.
All right, so we are now moving on to reports of select committees, of which we have none. Reports of representatives, of which we have none. Fiscals, letters, miscellaneous communication, we have none. Board of Control Commission, we have nothing. Unfinished business, is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Hearing and seeing none. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Alderman Clifford.
Yeah, just to let the board members know, um, I'll be scheduling a DPW Budget Committee meeting probably around the second week in December, but I'll let everyone know. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clifford. Alderman Gillum.
Just I'd like to, uh, make a comment if I could, the board allowed me to, do so. Uh, over the weekend, we had stuff of us. Um, I'm very impressed of the Rutland community came out again in a real bad situation and we couldn't collect food and the volunteer, we couldn't get the volunteers to expose themselves on handling that food, so it was all cash and checks. We collected forty-one thousand dollars in two days to feed the folks who need it in this town. I'm very impressed with the Rutland people coming out when things are down. And we had no expectation, we only thought we were going to do thirty, so we're way above our expectations. So kudos to Rutland. So this is good news, Rutland came through and both three charities are going to share that till and provide food for the holiday. Thank you so much.
Excellent news, Alderman Gillum. Thank you for sharing. Any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions or new business to come before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have motion to adjourn and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.